Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being with us tonight. And I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. Christina, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Shannon, can we get a real call, please?
Councilmember Viasenior?
Here.
Mayor Protem Edmonds?
I am here.
Mayor McCall?
Here.
Councilmember Austin?
Here.
And Councilmember Simone Alex is absent.
Thank you very much. And if I can get, let me just make this comment real quick. Our first presenter is not here yet. She's stuck in traffic. So, we're going to push item 8A until she arrives. So, we're just going to stack until she gets here. So, with that, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven, the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Too many cold medicines. We're going to go on to public comments. And first speaker-
Mayor, we have, sorry, Mayor, interrupt. We have a presentation.
There is none.
From Kate Furlong with Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council.
Oh, that's really strange. Just out of my agenda. Okay. Well, good thing you called me out on that. Okay, well, come on up. We would love to hear from you tonight.
Should we mix the agenda?
Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Well, good evening. My name is Kate Furlong. I'm with the Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council. I would like to thank you all for allowing me to be here to present the work that I've been working on with Councilmember Viasenior and with Chief Garola. We're working on creating a localized community wildfire protection plan. This is a new innovative process. A countywide community wildfire protection plan exists, and the last one was actually drafted in 2010. So, as you can imagine, there's been quite some dramatic changes in our county since then. And I wanted to take a new process by focusing on these localized plans, understanding our local needs, and being able to uplift the voices of the people, especially throughout the Heritage Valley, to be able to influence the update. So, I've been working with our community to be able to create a plan. This is focused, focuses on wildfire prevention through fuels mitigation, which Chief conducts a lot of really great programs throughout the city, to do home hardening assessments, which is what our organization is starting to do, to educate the community on what we can do to strengthen structures around the city to be able to protect and reduce the risk of losing our homes during wildfires, and particularly especially evacuation planning, especially when it comes to working with people with ADA needs. So, there is a major gap throughout the county for these needs for evacuation, so I wanted to make sure to highlight these needs. These plans are utilized to be able to access funds. That's one of the most important things and why I really wanted to make sure to highlight the needs of Fillmore in particular. There's a lot of money that's coming down the pike from Cal Fire, so I wanted to make sure to get everyone's needs listed here. So, I wanted to come and make a presentation today as an invitation. So, I have a draft of the plan here that I'll have for you to review as well. But we also have it on our website, which is venturafiresafe.org. We have a survey that is attached to that, so you can submit all of your public comments there, if you have any recommendations, anything that you see that happens to be missing. If you have a great idea that you want to see in the city, please let me know. I want to include your voices. Everyone's voice is valid here. So, I want to make sure that that's open and present it to you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Go ahead. Lynn has a question.
Yeah. First, I'd like to thank you for taking the leadership in to the committee. And isn't Marissa Rodriguez also on that committee?
Yes, Marissa is on that committee.
I'm sure she's watching, so I'll just be sure we mention her.
She has been so invaluable to this process. She's really helped us be able to elevate the voices of people who have more needs for transportation and to make this process as equitable as possible. I want to make sure that everyone's included. We have elderly citizens. We have people with more transportation needs, and I wanted to make sure that those voices are heard.
Yeah, well, thank you, and thank you for taking this on.
Where should I provide this to?
Oh, if you want to give it to Shannon, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
And if I could just make one quick comment. I just want to thank you, Kate, for all of your work on this, and thank you, Chief Garola, for all the time that you spent. We started doing this, I think we met up at the disaster preparedness fairback last September, and we said, and Kate pulled us all aside and said, "We need to work on this. Fillmore needs this." And so, we've been meeting regularly, monthly, and doing research, spending a few hours, you know, sometimes weekly, if not more than, you know, 10 hours a month or more, just putting this together. So, please provide your input. We appreciate it. There's a lot of information there. And again, this is about making Fillmore more fire safe and about, again, bringing funds to our town. And we know that we've seen from, you know, the last few years that this is something that is invaluable to all of our residents. So, please, you know, pitch in, take a look at it, and again, appreciate your work on this, Kate. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Okay, so now, we're going to move on to public comments. And I do have three speakers for public comments. I do have other cards on agenda items, so we'll hold those until the agenda item comes up. We'll give everybody three minutes at this point. There is a little timer. Well, it was. I'm not sure if it's still there or not.
It's there.
Okay. The yellow button at 30 seconds does not work, so I will do my best to interrupt you quietly and let you know that your time is almost up. But if you could please hold it to three minutes, that would be fantastic. Our first speaker tonight is John McKinnon, if you want to come on up.
Hi, hello. My name is John McKinnon. I do live in town here. Well, I talked to Ms. Edmonds about it earlier, the first time, and we're thinking about proposing bringing some kind of band on the train coming from Fillmore to Montavo, maybe going like six, six hours back and forth. And these bands would have to be like from bands that are in the Ventura County area, and they will be bringing for charities, and there would have to be some kind of security on the trains, I would imagine, and there'd be trains that would go for country music and rock and roll, soft, you know, not no, you know, other gang, you know, just really good stuff, family stuff. And you could redo for some kind of, and I got about eight bands that would like to, you know, audition, and we do fundraisers for different charities. That's what I'm talking about. We'll have to talk more about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Renee Swenson?
Good evening. Tonight, I'm representing the Fillmore Club, Rotary Club of Fillmore. I've got a few clubs that I'm super responsible for. And so, I want to first say that we are having a fun run coming up on the 21st, so mark your calendars, but that's not exactly what I was going to come up here to talk about. Tonight, I would like to ask of the city council to consider waiving the permits fees for the arch that the legacy project, the Rotary is sponsoring, the legacy project, that arch that goes over Central. And I've been thinking about it quite a bit. We have a city agreement in the works right now. We've added a couple of points, bullet points, that makes it feel a little bit more equitable for us. We've had a lawyer look at it, and I know Tiffany is looking at it, council's looking at it right now. But the, what I'm thinking, and the reason we are bringing this up, is that it's a partnership between the city and the Rotary to do this project. And having the city give us $112,000 for us to give it back with permit fees seems not quite like a partnership, so I was hoping that we could get that added to our city agreement. And I know that this would have to then be proposed and voted on next, in the next council meeting in May, but I think it's important to show that participation and connection and partnership. And so, that's my comment for tonight.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Annette Sula?
Hi, good evening. I'm here because at the end of the last city council meeting, there was a proposal brought up, and it was voted on that it would be on the agenda for this time, but I see that it's not on the agenda, and I know there's some people missing, and I don't, but it was about the city council proposing a letter in opposition to AB 2223. And, and that is the, the council member Simone Alex brought it up and read about that, and this is really, really important to a large population of Fillmore. And what, what it says in that, that it will, it will de, okay, decriminalize perinatal, okay? And perinatal means, the definition of perinatal is, whoops, put the glasses on, okay, is relating to the time usually a number of weeks immediately before or after birth. So, this would allow for babies' lives to be terminated even after birth, and that there would be no criminalization over that. There would be no, no one to, nobody would to, they couldn't bring charges, they couldn't do anything. So, there are many of us in this community who have very strong opinions about this whole issue, but this crosses the line, a line that we never even believed was possible, that people would consider terminating a child's life after birth. And so, I was very excited about the fact that you guys were going to send a letter in opposing or draft a letter for that, and I don't know when that's happening, but the vote is moving along in the assembly, and it's already passed to of the places it has to go through before it goes to vote, and the time is getting really short on us being able to send a letter that says, you know, "We are in opposition to this." I mean, I know we can do this individually, but coming from the city would be yet another stronger push to just say no, you know, "We are, we do not support this." And so, I'm just asking you to consider doing whatever you can to do that quickly, if you can. And God bless you all. Good night.
Thank you, Annette. Okay, so, that is the only public comment cards that I have for this section of public comments. So, is anybody else looking to speak at this time? Okay, if you come on up, please.
I have this form.
Oh, if you could hand it to her, that would be great. Are you here to speak on an item, or just?
On a similar bill, the AB 2223, I'm just urging the same, urge you guys to also write a letter in opposition of this. So, right now, the current law is, the county coroner is to inquire and to determine a sudden or unusual death related to a self-induced or criminal abortion. So, what is a criminal abortion? So, it's an unlawful expulsion of the fetus by artificial means. So, it is a felony when a person advises, assists, or performs an abortion with someone who's not like a medical, like a doctor. Physicians failing to report a known or suspected cases of abortion that are criminal are open to suspicion of complicity and to criminal prosecution. Also, the death of a mother upon whom an abortion has been performed is homicide. So, if you can just imagine the dangers this would bring to women for having these in-home abortions, or just having these, or neglecting their children too, who are already born, their newborns. So, there's already a law that protects the babies from being born from this happening. So, what AB 2223 is just not making any of the women or people involved in assisting this abortion liable, and so they're able to neglect their newborns, so that if they choose to not have it after it's already been born, then it's okay, because it was their choice. So, that's what this law is doing. And so, we just strongly urge that you write a letter in opposition to just protect those innocent babies who are already born, these newborns. Thank you.
Thank you. You're Andrea, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, and Eddie Enriquez?
Good evening. I'm Eddie Enriquez. I'm basically going to reiterate much of what my wife already said. We're basically here to voice our thoughts and our concerns with AB 2223, which at its basis seeks to legalize self abortions throughout all stages of pregnancy, and on top of that, it seeks to legalize the killing of an unwanted child just days after its birth, essentially infanticide. We believe that every human has a right to human, to life from the moment of conception, so we humbly urge you all to write that letter in opposition to this bill to Assemblywoman Buffy Wicks, a message for the bill that disgustingly seeks to legalize the killing of a living human, living human child inside and outside of the womb of its mother. The unborn cannot speak for themselves, so we feel compelled to be here and attempt to give them a voice, even if it's a small voice here in our small city of Fillmore. So, we hope that that message of, that right to life finds its way echoing all the way up the state and into Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else at this time? Okay, I'm going to move on from public comments to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so, as I mentioned, item 8A, that's the Fillmore Equestrian Center. We're going to hold that for now, because our presenter has not arrived yet. She's stuck in traffic. We're hoping anytime. So, I'm going to move on to item 9A, and then as soon as she's here and we complete, we'll go back and catch up on that item. So, I'm going to open this up now to staff on item 9A.
Mayor, before you start, I have to recuse myself. I have conflicts with 9A and 9B.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The, the item 9A is the, it's the presentation of a report for the adoption that is necessary to initiate the process of adoption of assessments for the storm drain, storm drain districts of the city. And there are seven districts. And basically, we have in the package, a, an engineer's report that's prepared annually, which basically takes the, all the parcels. There's a budget in the package also for each of the districts, and then there's a determination of the tax rate per parcel, which is then, there's an assessment role that's developed, and then we submit that to the Ventura County Assessor's Office once the whole process is completed. So, we do the, this process is for the council to review the report, to adopt the necessary resolutions, and to establish a public hearing date, where at that point, then we'll adopt the actual report that will be submitted to the county.
Any questions for staff?
I have, well, I have a comment. I was pleased in looking at it to see that some, in some instances, you lowered what they had to pay, because it was, we were covering the cost, and the purpose of it is to cover the cost of the, of the, this is the storm drain. And so, in most instances, it's raised, but it's not substantial, so I was happy to see that. But I was happier when we could say they could reduce their fees. So, I was pleased that you're keeping it within the ground of people being affordable. So, thank you.
Right, and that's, every year, it has to, we have to reevaluate that process.
Yeah, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? So, I need to just note that I need to recuse myself from hometown, which is District Three.
Okay.
Do I move to the meeting?
You are, you're not in a district, Lynn.
No, I know. I'm not recusing myself, but since you're leaving.
No, I'm not leaving. I just, I'm just, I can vote. I just recuse on that, on that section.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution number 223872, and set a public hearing for May 24th, 2022, at a regularly scheduled city planning commission, or city council meeting.
I second that motion, and also recuse myself specifically from Storm Maintenance District Number Four, Riverwalk.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so, I'll tell you what, Roel, you're standing here. Let's do item 9B, because you're presenting on that, and then we'll come back to 8A. Okay, so, go ahead.
And so, item 9B is the, generally the same process for the landscape and lighting districts throughout the city, and those are, there's a report in the package, which has the same type of information, where the, there's the budgets for the, each of the districts, and the calculation of a, of a tax rate that, again, is submitted to the assessor's office, and, and then is included in the tax bill. And we also have to establish a public hearing date to, to approve the final report that's submitted, and-
And I have something.
And with that, there's, any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Yes, I have one. There's one section in here that you said that the amount of money that we get is not sufficient for the taking care of the facility, and the people that live there, and I'm not sure which area that is, are not able to financially do it. And so, we're going to be noticing them that we're not able to maintain that, that area to the extent that we like to do that. And I was wondering if people who are in that area were, received a letter to ask if in fact, that's what they wanted to have happen, or would they rather pay a little bit extra in order to maintain that, the parks, which is primarily what it is, lighting parks.
Can I help answer this?
Yeah.
So, these are assessment districts that are subject to proposition 218, so that means you need a majority vote of the residents within the district to approve an increase above these little colas that are in this report, and those usually don't pass. We've tried that, and it's failed, and it's, it's a cost for the city to go through the whole process and then have it fail. And so, usually, what's done is what is being recommended here, where you let people know that you're just going to have to cut back on the service a little bit to stay within the budget, because you're at the mass, mass assessment.
If you're letting them know that we're going to cut back a little bit on the services, is there a way that you could add to that, saying if you would like to, to get those services, this is what you have to do? And then they would do that, no?
That could be part of the notice.
That would be great if you can do that, so that they have the option to pay more if they want to or not.
Well, we need to know that, that it would pass, we'd have to hear from enough of them to know. Last time, we tried one, I mean, it wasn't even close. Most people voted no.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so I need to recuse myself from Lighting and Landscape District Number Two, Track 5160 of Hometown.
Okay. I move to adopt resolution 223869, 223870, 223871, 223873, 223867, 223868, and to set a public hearing by the city council at a regularly scheduled meeting on May 24th.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I'm sorry, I just need to say my aye with my recusal for tract 5099 Riverwalk.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you so much, Roel. We appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to move backwards now. We're going to go back to item number 8A, and this is the Fillmore Equestrian Center work plan, and I'm going to turn that over to staff.
Good evening. Thank you. Sorry for my tardiness. I appreciate you switching it around for me. So, tonight, I'm here to give you an update on the grading at the Fillmore Equestrian Center for the fill blanket, which is really our closed burn dump site, which is the land use work plan. So, you have the staff report before you. Just as a reminder, everyone, the Fillmore Equestrian Center is operated by a third-party contractor, which is Heritage Valley Farms and the Robleado family, through a lease agreement, and it's located on the closed land use burn dump site, and operated under a solid waste health permit to the city, since the city owns the site. As you may recall, a few months ago, we went through a process where the Health Department was saying that the fill blanket over the closed burn dump site is low, and when it rains, and the puddles have been, it's been eroding for years, and they wanted us to put an additional fill blanket on the burn dump site, but there's, you know, it's an active equestrian center. And so, the contractor stepped up and said that he would, he made this plan, and so, there's an approved work plan to add a fill blanket, but do it in a staged manner, and sort of reinvent the equestrian center. And the layout that is before you is part of the approved work plan that the Environmental Health Department reviewed and approved, and that the city approved, and we went back and forth and talked about it. And so, this picture is what was envisioned, and right now, the contractor at the equestrian center has presented what we see before us that's in the work plan to the boarders at the facility, and they're, they're going through a process. This may not be exactly how it looks, because it's open to feedback and working together to make the best ultimate layout, but this is the vision that we're heading for. And so, towards getting to that vision, we approved a fill blanket grading plan, which is just an agricultural fill blanket, and the idea behind the plan was to fill nominally plus or minus three feet across the site, giving it a 1% sheet flow off the site. There is like a hole, a deep part in the back corner of the site that would be about six feet of fill in that area, but in general, plus or minus three feet going down to zero at the grading daylight. And this was the plan that was originally approved. And then, when they started grading to those elevations, because this plan envisioned over all the way to the right here is the, there's an existing levee that goes all the way around the, the east side and the north side of the existing closed land use burn dump site. And prior, the contractor had brought in a lot of fill material and built up a big pad area over and on top of this levee. And we created a plan that would tie into the original top of levee, and I thought that he could just, you know, leave the dirt beyond the levee there. What I didn't realize is that the pad area that was built up over on top of the levee was much more dirt above the original levee than I had realized. And so, and the contractor began grading, and here's a couple pictures from that. The permit was let in January. We had a pre-construction meeting. They staked it out on January 14th and began to import dirt. And then, they started to fill up the beginning of the arena and raise the grade for the front part, and like I said, I was expecting it to go from zero up to like three and a half feet in the corner. And then, it started getting really high, and there was some conversations with the inspector and the grader, and the grading, the grading person that was working the grading was saying, "Oh, yeah, we're going to fill it fat to compact it and then remove more," and then- then by February fourth, it became apparent that there was a grade break issue. And the contractor actually thought that he was matching the grade above the levee that's like ten feet high and coming all the way across the site like that. And that's when we realized there's a miscommunication. And he wasn't building to the approved planned surface. He was building to a different surface. And so I, we issued a stop work. I went and I met with him and the boarders and said, what are we doing? This is what we're supposed to be doing. And he's like, well, this is what I thought I was doing. And we got that worked out. So you can see on the lower picture here, this is what it looks like today. This was when we issued the stop work, what it looked like. This is actually an inspection photo from a post-rain inspection on March twenty-ninth and what it looked like. And as you can see, we left it a pretty compacted flat pad, but at the edges, because these are steep slopes that he just like built up out of nowhere, they're not compacted. It's not finished. And, and that's why we were doing rain inspection to make sure that there wasn't erosion. So we had the site staked properly, and we came up with this revised grading plan. It looks a lot like the other grading plan, but it's not. Because it does have primarily, what's different is the grades are a little deeper. They, they add about a foot and a half of fill and, and wrap the grading around the roping arena with a swale to direct the drainage around the roping arena. But this area right in front of the roping arena, the, the Health Department, the, what we call the LEA, the Local Enforcement Agency, was saying that, that there's a shallower area of fill right adjacent to the roping arena than previously thought. And they were requesting that we deepen the fill in that area. The thing is that that area is the downstream end of the whole site. And if you increase that area by a foot or two, now you're going up at one percent. So the whole site drains positively. So, you know, that foot or half, the whole site needs to be raised that much. And so this plan does that. It creates a swale flow line there. It lifts everything up about two feet across the site. And then this area where the yellow box is, they wanna get up and create a little bit higher pad. So this area right here inside the box that says, install ten-foot wide, two-foot tall, ten-foot wide slope are these lines right here. And I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail about that. So that area, if I draw the yellow line right here, that yellow line is shown in this east levee section. And starting from the right side of the section is the flat area that slopes away at one percent all the way down to the roping arena. And then it's gonna come up at, you know, two feet, high over ten feet is a pretty gradual slope. It's like a five to one slope. So it's just a gentle slope up to a pad that'll be two feet above the rest of the area. But it'll be a gentle transition up to that two-feet area. And then, when you get over towards the levee, you can see in this section, the thing labeled levee. The top of the original levee was at four-thirty-two, which was the original ground at the equestrian center. Right now, it's four-forty-three. So it's like ten, eleven feet higher than the original top of the levee. And so what we're looking at is getting this more level pad that drains towards the north at that one percent grade, and then doing an interim condition where we tie in, build a two-to-one slope to tie into that existing fill that's sitting on top of the levee, because we can't do grading out into the river until we get permits. And so, right now, the revised grading plan, that's how we handle it, sort of a slope up once, come to the grade, slope up to join what's out there as an interim condition. And then what will happen is, come back to get the permitted project to remove the fill and do whatever we need to do on the riverside of the levee. And ultimately, that will tie back in. And the final grade is at about three feet above the existing top of levee. So when it's all said and done, the grading project will add three feet to the existing top of levee. And so that project, when we grade from the other side and tie in permanently, that needs to be a levee extension design that will require some more qualified grading that would never, you know, that's gonna be, needed to be done by a licensed grading contractor for sure. The rest of the fill inside it is, is gonna be, you know, deeper than the original plan, but up to, so now that hole that was at like up to six feet, it's gonna be like eight, eight and a half feet of fill at that deepest part. And so, but it is a agricultural fill blanket. And what we're talking about is still doing the original plan. It's phased grading. It's a couple feet higher than we originally planned. We have a better tie-in design at the top of the levee. And Phase One is the only thing that we've permitted so far that include the area in the red circles, the main arena out front, and that back area against the levee is what they're grading right now. And they don't have permission to grade the other phases. But the phase grading plan, once this Phase One is done, then they can move things over and start on Phase Two, where it just highlighted pink, and then move things from Phase Three into Phase Two and grade Phase Three, and then Phase Four, and come back and do Phase Five, Six, Seven, and finally Phase Eight. And then the whole fill blanket will be constructed. And so that's the plan, was the plan, is the plan. It's just a slight change in the details of how the grading is gonna work. And because it's just a slight change in the details of how the grading works, the LEA has indicated that all you're doing is building the fill blanket a little deeper than we originally intended. You're meeting the intent of the work plan that was approved, and they don't want or need a change order to the work plan. They just wanna know that it's deep enough when it's all said and done, and they want an ASB. And so we don't have to do anything with the LEA to change that approval. If we change this, it's gonna be a change order approval at the city level for our grading permit. It also allows them to import additional filler, which is consistent with the LEA now saying that they do want it a little deeper, but they want it deeper on the, on the lower end. So it does become deeper overall. But then that extra pad area, the back area, is an ask by the contractor to make more usable space to benefit the equestrian center in realizing his original work plan. So that's, that's my report, and I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, so questions for staff?
Yeah. You said that the levee would be lowered?
No, raised.
No, the, the levee has a roof, a ceiling, the actual levee. And it's been built much higher than that. That is going to be brought down to the original level of the levee.
Oh, the, the excess filler that's sitting on top of the levee is gonna be removed down to be, to be three feet higher than the levee still, and extend the top of the levee to meet that new elevation.
Okay.
So we'd add to the levee, make it higher.
I, I don't know. Do we do public comment first?
Yeah, let's not talk about...
Yeah, let's do public comment first.
Yeah, okay.
This is questions for staff. Any other questions for staff?
Oh, I do have a question.
I have, I have a couple. So we have eighty-three thousand under the new plan estimated, eighty-three thousand cubic feet coming in of dirt. What was our estimation, the initial coming in?
There was sixty-two thousand yards, a little over sixty-two thousand yards of total grading with fifty-five thousand yards of import.
Okay, so we're bringing in another twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand cubic yards. And then, how long, how long's the schedule been advanced now because of these issues?
Well, we stopped work February eighth, and it's now April twenty...
Right. I'm just asking, is the schedule still gonna stay on the, the original schedule? Or is it gonna be extended another six months, eight months, ten months, a year?
Because of the additional dirt?
Yeah.
No, because the contractor's original schedule was, he really thought he was bringing in closer to a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand yards, and that's what his schedule was based on.
Okay. And you kinda answered the question of, this is gonna be done by a licensed contractor. We're gonna make sure that the staking's all correct this time. We're not gonna go out and end up with correct staking like we did last time?
Correct, yes. I've made it clear that the engineer of record needs to be the one doing the engineering, which surprised me that it was not. That caught me off guard. I didn't realize that was a possibility. And, and the engineer of record is Jensen Design and Survey, and they actually have confirmed to me that they've received a retainer and they're, they're in it for the long haul. And they've done this revised grading plan and submitted the change order. And I've been working with their engineers and the contractor to get to this level. At this point, one of the questions before you is about whether or not to have the fill blanket. You know, I know that when we go to extend the levee and have the permanent grade up and around the levee area, that I would definitely require a licensed contractor. A fill blanket with an eighty-five percent compaction that's not supporting habitable structures, that's why we were gonna let Mario do it with his labor in the first place. But it got staked wrong to begin with, which then led us down that path. And so there's kind of a decision point right there to be made.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question? A lot of dirt was brought in prior to the, a lot. And some of the dirt's gonna be removed. And I was told that it was clean dirt that came in. And so why are we adding dirt when we already have so much dirt stacked up high and into the riverbed? And can't that be used first? And then the decision made as to whether or not additional dirt needs to be brought in?
That dirt was placed without a grading permit or any environmental permits in the river with no permit. So you need Department of Fish and Wildlife, Regional Water Quality Control Board, environmental permitting to touch that dirt. You can't use that dirt.
Okay, then the dirt that's on top of the levee?
We need to tie into that point so that we don't touch the dirt behind it. It's all one mass.
Can any of the dirt that was brought in be used? It's just the dirt that was in, put into the riverbed is not allowed to be used?
Yeah, and he'll be using what was brought in on the, on the equestrian side of the levee. That's already there and being incorporated into the work, yes.
So is there a way to say that you can't bring in new dirt until you have finished the dirt that you already have?
Uh...
Until you've used up all the excess dirt that was brought in?
We don't normally predict means and methods for how they're gonna build. Like, they're allowed to bring in as much dirt as they can bring in, and the means and methods of how they get there is not something that I normally direct. There's a, a thing about that. But I do anticipate, because that front arena was built up too high, he'll need to move that dirt to the back section and start working the back section in. And so there should be a time where there may not be import until he's ready for it. I mean, but it all comes down to the contractor building it in, in the manner that it works.
Right. No, I want it to be built appropriately. I'd like to maintain the original one. I spoke with the head of the Environmental Health Department today and was told that it would be fine, either one is fine, as long as we added that dirt that they're asking for. So it doesn't have to be in a plan or anything. We can just, and they'll, as long as that is in there, we can use the original plan and then go from there.
No. That's what I mentioned. But by adding the, the new dirt in the area that they wanted, it drives a grade change for the whole site, so the drainage will work.
Right, no.
Right.
They said as long as it works, we don't have to change the plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we could stay with the same plan if we chose to do that. As long as you, you do the correction, you just add the soil that needs to be added. But you don't, they were, we were, I was told that you didn't have to change the plan. We could go with the same plan.
They mean their work plan, not my grading plan.
Okay.
So there's an, there's a work plan that was approved by the Environmental Health, and they've been very clear that we do not have to submit a change order to that plan.
Right.
But I'm saying that from a grading plan perspective, that I permitted as the city to do what Environmental Health asks and deepen the fill at the lower end of the site requires more dirt across the site.
And that has, that's what the second plan is then, is that is, is covering that specific portion. But with the history of so much dirt brought in that wasn't necessarily approved, I'm concerned that that will happen again. So I wanna be sure that does not happen, that additional dirt does not come in, and then we have to figure out what to do with it.
Understood, understood. And, and the original dirt that was brought in, there was no grading permit and no inspection.
I know. I was told it's clean, but there was no inspection. So how can you...
Okay, so we did not, we weren't aware that was gonna happen.
Just to confirm, you guys are keeping up on this. Obviously, you're inspecting it regularly. You're on top of this. You've got your finger on the pulse.
Right. And, and the contractor did make an inspection deposit to cover the inspection fees, and we have a grading inspector watching. And then they also have a licensed geotechnical engineer that's retained by the contractor that's testing the compaction and submitting compaction reports to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Much better.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Yeah. No, it was answered. I think Lynn's original question when she began talking was my also question. So you answered that one. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to call up some public speakers.
Sure.
And then we can come back and have more discussion. So again, we're gonna go three-minute total time on this. And first one, Mario and Vanessa Robledo.
Actually, our attorney will.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Dye. I'm the attorney for the Robellos, and I've been working with them and in context with Ms. Israel and, and your city manager, Dave Rollins, and also Ms. Hughes regarding this, straightening out the, what I view is sort of a mutual misunderstanding and mistake in communication. But basically, we started out here with the need to address an existing problem. The fill blanket is too shallow. The LEA and the city are, are in sync on that. And so the question then was how to move forward with a grading plan that meets the needs of the fill blanket and the needs of the contractor to make it happen within a range of revenue prospects that would allow the improvements to be made that are anticipated for the, for the site. So while we, you know, the Robellos are happy to, to be here with the amended plan, are willing to accept it and go forward and make sure that there's, all of the city's requirements are satisfied, including the geotechnical inspection reports and the licensed contractor and so on. You know, I think that the more important, softer issue really is the, the boarders' sense of what's happening there, and are they looking forward to the changes? And in fact, most of the people that are giving them feedback on a daily basis are happy with what's, what is gonna happen. They're happy and willing to go forward with the amended grading plan and look forward to getting, getting back to work. If you have any other questions, you know, I'll be happy to address them.
Very good. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So Mario and Vanessa, you're not looking to speak?
How you doing, Mario? I just wanna, I think there was a whole misunderstanding on our grading. And as far as a benchmark, I think we can all get past the benchmark. And what happened, happened, and we move forward, and we continue with the grading like I promised in two thousand and eighteen. I, I will move forward and fulfill my requirements, as I gave my word in two thousand and eighteen when we got this position. And I will fulfill the requirements and get it done.
And we will go through our phases like we put in our initial proposal. And we'll work together with the boarders and keep on having our border meetings and make sure our boarders are involved. And we do meet with our boarders. And a lot of them have met with us, with us one-on-one. And so we could sit there and explain, because I think there is a lot of hearsay on what's going on out there. And I open my doors up to anybody that could want to come into the office. And I explain to them. And we have several boarders that have come in, and then we have a lot of boarders that don't come in. So I just think we just have to open, you know, keep the communication going between everybody to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And I think with us having our border meetings, sometimes we have them twice a month, and, and communicate with them better would help everybody understand the situation. And again, you know, the LEA, the county does come out and inspect everything, and they oversee everything. And as long as we're meet, you know, we hired, we have our team that we are hired that are gonna be doing everything. And, and the grading, the people that are doing the grading...
We have a licensed contractor.
We have a licensed contractor that's doing the work. So we, it's none of our employees. It's none of that. It's a licensed contractor that will be handling all the grading. So...
Okay.
Okay. Any, any questions?
Do you have a contract with the grader? Are you, is a contractor under grade, under a contract?
Yes.
We have a contract.
Yes, we do.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was told that the grading that's near the levee needs to be a higher certified grader. Have you hired that person also?
Um...
Not the, not the general contractor that can do the basic one, but not the one closest to the levee.
Well, that same person can do that. They are contracted to do it.
Not contracted, but do they have the certification?
Yes, they do. They have all the certifications.
And you'll turn all that into the city so that they're aware of the certification?
Yes.
Yeah, we already, we already sent it.
Well, we sent David Rollin their contractor's license and certifications.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what's the name of that contractor? The, the one you have, the grader?
Yeah, Sakaida.
Sakaida? Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Beth Hartman.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I do board a Fillmore Equestrian Center along with my family and we've been there since August, made up a lot of great friends. It is a great place to be at. That being said, we do agree and understand that this grading process needs to commence. What we are more concerned about is the misunderstandings that have happened in the past and we do acknowledge that, you know, misunderstandings do take a place. But we're, we're hoping for is that we can get some assurances that the situation will be a little bit closely, more closely monitored by the city council so that we don't have these setbacks again. We have kids there that love to use the arenas and go on trail rides. And with the grading project, like any other construction project, they're limited in space and activity and we'd just like to see it fully functional and operational so that everyone can enjoy once again. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Christopher Perucker? Sorry if I just butchered that. Forgive me.
You did pretty bad. It's Perucker. You did pretty good. Most people do way worse. So, I'd like to just point out that initially, Mario hired the, hired a company to create this plan. He agreed to that plan. He then submitted the plan to you guys and got it approved. So he was completely on board with his original plan and then misunderstood his plan when he implemented it and added, instead of three feet, we're at about 12 feet in the front arena. At, and back in February at the meeting, when I asked him what happened, he went, "Well, I'm not an engineer." So obviously, he's having some, some issues reading the plans that he's agreed to. And now, we're at a point where, okay, because he misunderstood that plan and went four times higher than he was supposed to, we're submitting for new plans and we're asking for, to bring in more dirt. And say, so, you know, and this is all after, he already dumped five acres worth of dirt, 15 to 30 feet high, behind the levee, not even on the ranch property. And then, on top of the levee, we're at eight to 12 feet higher than the levee itself. Not to mention all of that dirt from the levee to the back arena. And so, we're just at a point where it's, it kind of seems like every time he brings in more dirt or does something wrong, we get a new plan. And we're back to asking the city to go, "Hey, can, can we approve this plan for Mario to fix it?" And then, it gets approved and then we just kind of continue the cycle. And I asked Roxanne at the last, you know, at one of the borders meetings that she was at, what we were going to do in the future to keep this from happening. And I'm really just worried that we're considering having another, a new grading plan that lets him just keep bringing in more dirt and that we're going to go, "Okay, well, he built it too high, so we're just going to make him bring it down a little bit and we're going to have, we're going to have it, everything be higher by a couple of feet." The, the fact that the stakes were not, you know, the original stakes that were put in were not done by the company that originally surveyed everything. So they used the wrong benchmark. I don't know how you screw that up. This is not a difficult plan to read.
30 seconds.
But I'd just really like to urge you guys to not approve him getting a new plan every time he messes up. I, I would also like to urge that everything is done by a licensed contractor and that he use up all of that dirt in the arena like Lynn said. Use up all that extra dirt in the arena and everything from the levee forward into the ranch that's not on the other side in the river bottom, use up that dirt before any more dirt is allowed to be brought in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and Steve McKinnon.
That was intentional to Jonathan. Good evening. A couple of thoughts I had all day while people were contacting me was fear, trepidation and reprisals. When they say, "Oh, everybody's into it." Now, there's a lot of people that are against it, a great majority, but they're afraid because this is the only game in town. If they get kicked out, as people do, where are they going to go? It's difficult. This is not what I was intended on speaking on, but boy, we're throwing figures around that aren't making sense. Five feet, three feet, come on. It's 12 feet, it's supposed to be three feet. It's not a couple of feet down. It's supposed to be three feet to zero and it's 12 feet. That's not two feet down, that's a great deal more. My feeling is, when you contract, when you develop a site, you get the best plan you can. They hired a good engineer, he came up with the best plan that was agreed to by you, by the city, by the staff, by the Robledos and also by Roxanne, but also by the LA, that group. They agreed to it like they had originally in 82, 80, 92, they had a plan. Well, they have this plan, they said, "We're doing it." Lynn just brought it up. They agreed to it, now we've made that mistake again. Remember that term when we went into the river and we're 20 feet high and we say, "It was a misunderstanding. It was supposed to be just a couple of feet of fill on the road, but it was a misunderstanding." It's not a misunderstanding. It's a screw-up and this is just another one. If you go out there and I, a few people have gone out there, it is enormous. My five-year-old granddaughter said, "What is that? That doesn't, what, what's that all about?" She's five years old, people recognize it. I, I would urge you to go out there, some have gone out there, I, I recognize that, but it's ridiculously high and it's not going to work. When they had the water come through, there was culvers opened up, it's the worst dirt you'll ever imagine. You can't drive your vehicle, "I have a four-wheel drive." How many vehicles got stuck in that little bit of rain? One day rain, everybody, that's sloughed off, sloughed off. And the four or five cars and trucks were, were stuck and had to be towed out. My thinking is...
30 seconds.
Thank you. The plan is good that you approved. What you agreed to, what they agreed to, what we all, we had meetings about, we all said three foot to zero, that's a good plan. Let's just stick with it. A little bit of bench here, but that middle arena, that's going to destroy everything to be that, it needs to be three foot to zero. I got 13 seconds. But I want you to know that we appreciate the job that you're doing. As a city council, I recognize that you're volunteers, that you're volunteers and that you're here to help the community. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I like that. He watches the clock. That's great. Thank you. Okay, so those are the only public speaker cards I have on this item, so discussion amongst council.
Well, I would like to stick with the original plan and I don't know if this is the time to make a motion or do we need to have some discussion?
Somebody else might want to have something to say first.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I want to, Roxanne.
Yeah.
Did you have more questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted, you said that this, this new plan...
Turn your mic on. Turn your mic on.
You said that this new plan would do the same thing as the old plan. The LEA signed off on it. It's cool. We're all, we're going to end up in the same spot with a little bit higher.
Right.
Okay.
How much is a little bit?
So, that's what I was trying to show on this picture. In this, so, well, let me back up. In the forwards section, the grades that we approved in the original plan kind of came down to zero and joined just by the roping arena and then they gradually went up from there. Now, we're going down to where right there, it's a foot higher than, you know, that's a foot to a foot and a half higher depending on where you look at. And then, that's going to reflect through the rest of the site. It's a foot and a half to two feet higher till you get to the backside in this yellow box where then, in addition to that foot and a half to two feet, you add another two-foot step up for the slope that's going to create this pad area against the levee. And, and that's going to put the whole section, when it's all said and done, like I was showing with this, this 432 was the original ground and we're, we're going to end up at 435 at that Easterly levee. So it's three feet higher than the, than the original plan too. Because the original plan tied into the top of the levee and this one goes three feet above the top of the levee. And so, we are removing eight feet of dirt at the top of the levee. Eight feet of dirt.
Why doesn't the original plan still, if it was effective then, why isn't it effective now? If it worked when we originally, when you originally proposed it and the engineers originally did it and we originally approved it...
Can I rephrase your question that I think you're asking? Because it's not coming across.
Okay, well, thank you.
Why did we change the plan?
Yeah, why? Good, good point, Diane. Thank you.
There's two primary reasons and a third. But the, the two primary reasons are, one, the contractor, Mario, said that he needed to bring in more dirt for it all to work. Like, the amount of dirt that was being brought in wasn't penciling out because the dirt brings revenue to, to replace and to rebuild the facility. And so, the 50, 60,000 yards that the original plan would do wouldn't generate the revenue to execute the plan. So it didn't pencil out. Again, he thought he was bringing in more like 100,000 yards of dirt, so there was a different financial picture right there. And then, the second driver is that as this all happened and the LEA comes and visits and, and they took out on the posts and the fencing around it to do this grading work and along the way, that's when it came up like, "Look, there's, you know, debris here and debris here." And so, the LEA is now going, "Well, it's a lot shallower here than I thought it was. We need a couple more feet of dirt down here where you were going to daylight." And the daylight had like a, a cut in to create the swale and they don't want us cutting in because there's not enough fill blanket there. So that's the other driver. So it's the financial picture and it's that, the grading that they did already, there was discovery of, "I want more dirt over in this area" from the Environmental Health Department. So those two reasons, and then the third reason that I would mention is this tie-in at the levee, but we could have taken the original plan and gone to the original top of levee and done the same two-to-one temporary slope up to, but it, but it would be much more exaggerated and it would come into the site more. And that is something that you could do. You could stay with the original plan. The only reason that I'm really saying, "Well, yeah, we need to bring in more dirt," is because the LEA is also saying over in that area, they want more dirt, that it's too shallow. So unless I could find a way to verify the fill depth and go back to the LEA and say, "No, it's fine, we don't need more dirt over there," I, I'm kind of trying to get more dirt brought in, so.
So are you trying to get more dirt brought in because it makes more financial sense for them?
That's part of the picture, but that's not why I'm doing it. I'm doing it, I'm approving it more because the LEA is also saying, "I want it deeper over here by the roping arena." So it's both. And then, there is this area where it goes up two feet and comes back, we don't have to do that. That just gives him more dirt so that it works financially.
So, does he need more dirt? I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm just, I'm not connecting the dots here at all. Forgive me. I, I just, we came up with a plan, the plan changed. I understand things changed. Somebody built something way too tall, somebody dumped some dirt. The LEA comes in, what everybody needs to understand is that the city is under obligation to the county to fix this.
Right.
That's the bottom line. All the extra dirt, he did this, she did that, they said that, doesn't matter. We have to fix it. So what is it going to take for us to fix it? Does our original plan work to fix that other than the additional dirt that they now say that we have to put in? Because I, I don't want to keep complicating this. It keeps getting complicated and then that's where the misunderstandings come from in my opinion. So, maybe you can clarify that for me?
My understanding from the meetings that I had with the Robledos and their attorney was that the original plan did not provide enough revenue from the dirt and that they needed more dirt or they wouldn't be able to do the project. If they don't do the project, the city needs to do the project. Needs to be done. Okay, so that's one thing. And then, the second factor is that the LEA came in and said, "Add a foot and a half of dirt over here and as soon as you do that, that's at the low end and I need the whole site to drain at 1%." So that added more dirt. So that helped Mario's situation. But they are asking for, instead of removing all of the excess fill that's backed by the levee on the, on Equestrian Center's side, they want to keep more of that there and be able to increase the height three feet because that helps the financial picture. So it's both things.
Okay, so if we move forward with what's being proposed and recommended, this will continue the project moving forward. It will give him an amount of dirt. He's obviously going to use what's on-site. I can't see him wanting to bring in more dirt than he needs because what's he going to do with it? Now, he's got the city thumb on top of him. I mean, we have to recognize that. The city is watching the, you know, the project now. So you tell me, is, is that what's best?
To me, it is. Like, the, the first go-round, there was no grading permit issued. I was completely unaware that he was importing dirt until it was brought to our attention that all these trucks were coming in and we stopped work. That was not a permitted project. And it was, you know, told to me that there was going to be some minor filling of, of the low areas in the site. And then, next thing I know, this big pad got constructed. So that was the first go-round. And then, we said, "Stop, create a plan." And so, we created a plan, we started doing it. It wasn't executed correctly and then there's information in the LEA's involvement and so this is a change order to a plan. I mean, plans change a lot of times when you start. The reason, you know, it can get all complicated, but the straightforward thing is that we need the fill blanket. Mario's still willing to build it and there's a partnership going on here so that the Equestrian Center can be bettered and it's sort of like a mutual benefit. So in my opinion, especially given that now we have a licensed surveyor, licensed contractor, grading inspection, everything's in place to have a better result because, I agree with Chris, like, you don't just keep doing the same thing and expect a different result. I think that's the very definition of insanity. But I think that the, the change that's been made here is that, you know, we're aware now that the surveyor's on board and they'll be staking it and the licensed contractor knows how to read the plan and will be building it. And so, we did make significant changes to how we're going to execute the plan as well. So I, I believe that this is the best of all of the different perspectives in the world and that we move forward.
And it, it doesn't require a change of the permit?
No. Right. It's just a change order to my grading plan, which I could approve if you guys all agree that this is what we want to see done.
I have one final question.
Sure.
The original dirt that was brought in, that you were not aware was going to be done until you went and saw this huge stack of dirt and the dirt went into the riverbed, that brought a lot of money in. So, how was that money used to help the, the borders there? Or is that money still available for the borders?
That's, I mean, how they run the center.
That's a business question, Lynn. I don't know that city can...
Well, but if we are choosing to do this partially so that the Robledos will have more money to do more projects, I think it's important that we also know how that original money was spent. And I'm not trying to interfere in their business plans. What I'm just saying is that if they're asking for us to provide this additional monies for dirt...
They're not asking us for money.
Well, they're asking us for the permission to bring in more dirt to get more money. So it's virtually the same thing.
So we own land.
Right.
We own land, we leased the land to somebody who took over that. We are bound by the lease. That's our legal obligation. It's not our legal obligation to get in the middle of their business affairs.
Absolutely.
So we are here to ensure that the property that we own and that we are liable for and that we have an obligation to the county as a burn dump site, that the city is going to make sure and ensure at whatever cost and at all of our disposal to make sure that it is filled properly and that we are approved by the county so that the county doesn't come in and shut it down. Because that's what will happen. Very simple. We don't operate their business.
No.
And for us to say that they made money off of dirt, to me, that's got nothing to do with the city. It doesn't. They, they leased a piece of property from us and we are bound by a lease. That's, that's how I see it. So I think we need to make a decision on what's before us and discuss what's right right here, which is about the grading and the dirt, uh, the plan. Any other comments?
Nope.
Any recommendations?
I would like to move that we do the original plan and that you approve, Roxanne, any additional dirt that needs to come in, to have it done properly so that the county and the city and the city council are not responsible.
Isn't that the same plan?
No, it's not really.
You're saying, you're saying you want to propose the original plan, but it's not the original, and it's, it's a little bit of different plan.
No, I'd like the original plan.
I, I want to go with what's recommended here.
You do.
Okay, so is there a second to Lynn's motion? Okay, motion does not, does not carry forward. Any other motions?
Well, Mark, are you making that motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna try, just go ahead and make it, I'll second it.
Okay. All right, my, my motion is that we go with the updated grading plan per recommended by staff, and that we also ensure, and we've already said it, but that the contractor has that valid Class C earthwork and paving license, um, and that we have a particular monitor that the required or requested amount of cubic yards coming in is verified and not gone over. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you.
And thank you for everybody waiting. Sorry, you got stuck in traffic for that one. Okay. All right, we are going to move on to item number nine C, and, uh, this is council discussion regarding a license agreement with the Fillmore Unified School District for the use of the Aquatics Center. Turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you were, over the past year, we have been working with the school district to develop a license agreement. Over the past couple of years, the high school, much of their credit have been able to expand their aquatics program over the number of years since we first started working with them. By doing that, though, the Aquatics Center is open about eight months of the year being used by the schools. We have to heat the pool up and keep it going. They were paying a minimal rent at that time for it. Due over the time, staff has been running the pool at a deficit, uh, so we brought some concerns up with them. And we wanted to, um, make sure we had a win-win agreement with the school district. One of the items that, some of the highlights of this agreement is that the school district will be able to use the pool for an eight-month period between September through mid-May. They have first priority to it. In addition to that, they will be providing annual license fee paid for by the district over the next five years, going up about five, about five percent each year, uh, over the next five years. They will also enter into an agreement with the city to pay for fifty percent of a pool replastering project, and we are currently working with Wounded Engineering and with the superintendent, giving her some information. They'll be partners with us reviewing the plans and making a decision on that one. In addition, the co, agreement also calls for the district to contribute fifty thousand dollars one time over the life of the contract for capital improvement projects. We put a definition in of what a capital improvement project actually is. Uh, so with that, we are trying to recommend an approval of this license agreement with the school district. After tonight, the school district will take it to their board, uh, the first week in May, for their approval of the agreement as well. And then hopefully we can do a joint press release, uh, saying we've solved the issues, we're working together. And one of the other things I need to figure out to, neglected to mention, is that we're going to be working together over the next five years to try to find non-general fund revenue to support the pool, uh, to keep it financed. From a fiscal standpoint impact, we're looking to receive approximately two hundred ninety thousand dollars for the next five years from license fees, and then one time fifty thousand dollars for, with the school district on capital improvement items. So staff recommends your approval of the license agreement. Your alternatives are to not approve a license agreement or direct staff to, to continue negotiations with the district.
Any questions for staff? Any recommendations?
I motion to, that we recommend the approval of the lease agreement.
And I second it, wholeheartedly.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. We're gonna move on to nine, uh, nine D, and this is regarding the 510 Santa Clara property update and request for authorization restricted deed.
I'll be presenting this item tonight, Mayor and council members. As you're aware, the city owns a small piece of land, it's point three seven acres, located at five, five ten Santa Clara Street. It's technically owned by the Successor Agency, which means that pursuant to state law, the city's been required to sell the property. The city, on June first of twenty twenty-one, declared the property surplus and has been going through the process required by the Surplus Land Act to sell the property. We offered the property to the list of required entities, no one ended up making an offer on the property. We then went through submitting the required paperwork to HCD to get a sign-off on selling the property. The last requirement we have from them is to require, requiring the city to record a covenant restriction that will say that if any housing is ever developed on that site, that fifteen percent of those units will need to be restricted for low-income households. So before you tonight is a request that you authorize the mayor to sign that and have staff record that covenant agreement, and then authorize staff to offer the property for sale on the open market. We did coincidentally, right before the SAC report was prepared, get an offer, well, an inquiry from someone who said that we should expect an offer, um, so this may be back in closed session on May tenth, for you to consider an offer if we actually do receive it. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Questions for staff?
I have one.
Okay.
In reading the document, I wasn't sure that if it had to be for housing still, or if it was purchased, it could be for whatever that individual wanted to do.
Exactly. It can be used for any purpose consistent with the city's zoning ordinance that are applicable, but if there's housing, then fifteen percent has to be.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Recommendations?
I recommend that the city council approve the mayor to sign the deed restrictions required by HCD and direct staff to record the signed document and direct staff to arrange for the sale of the property on the open market.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so we're gonna move on to nine E, and this is, uh, regarding the municipal election in November. Turn that over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to request the adoption of two resolutions. This is in preparation for the general municipal election that will be held November eighth of this year. The city of Fillmore is required to adopt a resolution calling and giving notice of such election, and we're also required to, um, not required, but we would like to consolidate with the county the election, as we usually let them drive the process and it benefits the city as well. So this year, we are actually, uh, voters will elect, um, two members for a full term of four years and one member for a term of two years. A calendar has been, um, attached to the staff report also to provide with some guidance on, um, due dates, and, um, we have also included the estimated cost of the election and this next budget cycle. So that pretty much concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I move the adoption of the recommendation. To join with the county, so that they'll help us pay for it.
Do we need to read?
Do you need to read the numbers? There's two items with resolution number, yes.
I go for it, Cynthia.
Okay. Um, I move to adopt city council resolution number two-two dash three-eight-seven-six and adopt city council resolution number two-two dash three-eight-seven-seven. I then was, okay, got it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Okay. So we're gonna move on to item number ten, committee commission board reports. Go ahead, Lynn.
The Blue Ribbon Committee, uh, Santa Clara Valley Blue Ribbon Committee was formed when, um, they were going to close the Santa Paula Hospital, and you can remember that, it was several years ago. And the committee has worked very hard with, uh, Ventura County, um, Health Department to, Medical Department to maintain the hospital, and now they're working to improve the hospital. So it's really exciting what is going on, and I wanted to be sure everyone knew that. The hospital will be sold and we move down to, across from the gas station on one-twenty-six, where the stoplight is, there's a large field there. And that will eventually house the hospital. It'll house a large, uh, building that will have all of the services that the county offers together, instead of if a person goes to one place, then they refer them to someone else and they have to go several blocks to get to the other place, and then they refer them somewhere else. They'll all be in the same place. There will, in addition to that, be a tri-level facility for older people or, or people that need that care, and there'll be an independent living area, assisted living, and then full service. And all of these will be graded in. It will start with a medical building, and then it will move to the hospital, and then they will, and of course, they'll have sufficient parking, at least that's what they say. But in addition to that, they're improving the programs that they have right now. And, um, they brought in a, um, new breast cancer detection machine, which those of us who are women who've had mammograms know how much fun it is to go to those. Um, and, um, this one is the first one in the county, and there are only a few in the state that have this new design that makes it more comfortable. So if you're gonna get a mammogram, go to the Santa Paula Hospital, because it's so much nicer. Um, they also have an extensive maternity ward, and the maternity ward is so nice, it looks like you're going into someone's home. It's very familiar, very comfortable. In addition to that, they have a duala, who is the Spanish midwife, who's, he's very, she is very certific, credentialed, um, but she also understands the culture because she's Mexican. For those people who would like to have someone that looks like them, help them through their pregnancy and their birth, um, she's there to help. Um, they have three midwives and they are really, really busy. So it's a really exciting place right now. They have what's called lawn conversations. Anyone can go and sit on the lawn, you can bring a chair if you don't want to sit on the grass. Um, and then they'll answer questions, but they'll also support mothers-to-be, as well as mothers that are new, and then people that have no children and are interested in what's going on. And so it's, uh, it's well-received and they have a large percentage of people that are going to that. They also have, and there's, uh, there are pages in the back that, um, on the shelf that describe the different components of the hospital, if you want to look at it in more detail. There's also an art CT scanning, which is the only one in Ventura County. And that's a scanning machine that will take pictures that then will, uh, isolate the different segments, so they can look at each component part, instead of having to do that manually. So that's really exciting. Um, and then the last thing they have developed, there's pregnancy and childbirth, there's also, I guess I didn't bring that one, there's a, um, LGBTQ plus, uh, unit that serves all of the LGBT plus community, thank you. Um, it's called proudly support the LGBTQ plus community by providing compassionate, comprehensive, inclusive care. And they have a doctor that's dedicated that and nurses that also are there, and they provide all the services that LGBTQ, um, individuals request. And it says, our team at Santa Paula West Clinic specializes in gender-affirming primary care. So if you're interested in any of these programs, it's state-of-the-art. It's very exciting that our little hospital that was going to be closed is going to stay open and improve. So that's my report.
Anyone else?
I just have a short report from, um, the Fillmore Pirouba Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Um, the, um, plan has been submitted, um, the, uh, groundwater sustainability plan to the Department of Water Resources, um, and so, it's, uh, it's undergoing its review, and, uh, our, our board will be undergoing some changes. Mr. Ed McFadden, who is the representative from the United Water Rep on the board, um, he will be retiring and moving away. And, um, also, the Piru Pumpers Association Representative Glenn Pace is, um, just sort of, he's also on his way out. We were to be, the question mark as of when. So the board will, um, they're very valuable, wonderful members, um, who I saw were so informative when it came to planning our groundwater sustainability, um, producing the plan, and, and really, um, provided such great input. So they will be missed, and I'm sure they will be replaced, um, by some equally, um, very competent folks. So I just wanted to give that update, and that'll happen the next two months or so.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, uh, city council reports, recommendations and comments.
Okay, I do. Um, so next month, which is a week away, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and the city of Fillmore is partnering with the Fillmore Unified School District, uh, the county behavioral health program, the county, um, public health program, as well as numerous nonprofits here in Fillmore, including Boys and Girls Club and One Step Alavés, Clinicus is involved, Gold Coast, um, um, Medi-Cal, and there's more and more that are coming for a health and wellness fair. It will be Saturday, May fourteenth, on the front lawn of the Fillmore Unified School District Administration. Saturday, May fourteenth, eleven to two. Uh, we will also have, um, Public Health will, will be having a mobile vaccine clinic, and there'll be some, a zumba and a yoga demonstration from, Renee was here from Region Yoga. So it, it's, it's a great event. Please, um, we're gonna be spreading the word on social media, on the city's website, and, uh, you'll be seeing more information, I think also distributed to, um, families through the school district. It, um, it's really much needed. As we all know, mental health affects all of us, and I think hopefully, hopefully emerging from this pandemic, we're seeing that, um, that our, you know, our bodies are healing, um, but our, our, our emotional wellness and our mental wellness, uh, needs a lot of care, and we need awareness about that. So, wanted to make that announcement. We can talk about that and see if there's a possibility there. One thing I didn't mention is that there is going to be some workshops. We're gonna use a couple of the, um, classroom, um, portables to do a health and wellness, really short, ten, you know, fifteen, twenty-minute workshops, both in English and in Spanish. This is a bilingual, um, wellness fair that'll be happening, and again, about helping people achieve well-being and recognize the signs of anxiety, of depression, um, you know, from the full spectrum. So again, this is a really helpful resource, um, for our community.
And what I kind of whispered, and I shouldn't have whispered, and I apologize for that, is that I ran into someone a couple of weeks ago, actually at the flower show, um, that told me that her brother had died because he ate a piece of meat, and no one knew how to get it out of him. And so he died because no one knew the Heimlich maneuver. And I did, I saved my dad's life for that because I read it on the, the sack for the grocery store, and he was ch- choking, and my mother said, well, I told him to chew his food. And I said, mother, and I did what it shows on the bag, and man, that meat just shot across the room, and he lived. And yet, no one knew it, and so I've asked that we do one on the Heimlich maneuver too, so that more of us will live if we eat large pieces of meat. So, thank you.
It's a good thing to do, yeah, absolutely. Um, let's see here, I, one other request I wanted to make of staff, and see if we can put this on the agenda to my fellow council members, is have that update on our housing element. I know it was about sixty days ago that I checked in, it was the end of February, and was told thirty days, um, out that we'll probably see that draft, and so I just want to make sure that we're following up as time moves forward. Um, and then also, just wanted to point out that I think per a new law, and I don't, I don't have the, the bill number, but there is a thirty-day, um, public review of the draft, and so I want to make sure that's incorporated into our timeline. So, anyway, I'd like to see if staff can give us an update at the next meeting on where we are with the housing element.
Yeah, I'm good with that, Dave, if you want to.
I'm good with that, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, anyone else? Okay, uh, city managers report.
Uh, just one thing tonight, our active adult center, we are currently in the need for volunteers, and drivers, we need volunteers to help us, uh, packaging food to be delivered to the seniors, and also drivers for the food delivery. If you're interested in that, please call eight zero five, five two four, three zero three zero for more information. It's also on our social media and our website as well, so I just want to, everybody know what, if you're ready to help out, please give us a phone call, and that's all.
I have a question on that. With the increased gas prices, I know that drivers get their gas paid for, is that still true?
Correct, we do pay mileage reimbursement.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, very good. So with that, we are going to, uh, recess into closed session. We do have two items this evening. We have a public employee performance evaluation and compensation review. Uh, city council hold a closed session pursuant to government code sections five-four-nine-five-seven, uh, five-four-nine-seven-six-eight, a conducted employee performance evaluation on the city manager and discuss the salary compensation and fringe benefits provided to the city manager. We also have conference with, uh, legal council regarding existing litigation. We also have conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. City Council conducts closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to confer with legal counsel regarding litigation with the city as a party. And this is the city of Fillmore versus the Citrus Packing House, Fillmore. And we will recess now and come back when we're done. Thank you.[619.82]
We're back. So council's back from closed session with no reportable action this evening and we will meet you back here on May 10th, 6:30 p.m. and good evening. Goodbye.